... captured in there.
Recording in progress.
Said other and then what did they write in for that question? It's not organized that. Brian confirms they've got all the verbatim from all the questions into part of the synthesis.
But I am very aware of it.
But they should do something with it.
It's not something you don't notice.
Yeah, I think some of that's getting presented tonight.
I guess I realize through the slides or what they have in that link.
Yeah.
There's like a $500,000 to $600,000 like typed in thing on one of them that's making it a 10 lane pool. I was like, what? Like, none of the surveys had made it a 10 lane pool. Like, we're missing a lot of things that people said they wanted and it wasn't 10 lanes.
No, I'm not intimidating. If someone's intimidated, it's fine.
I have to go dial back in for that part tonight. Be remote. All right, we're waiting on Martha. She's getting some food, right?
Yep.
We've heard to get in here and then we'll start off.
Sounds good. We have all the gluten free stuff is gone before you get here.
That's dairy.
There's salad.
Yeah, there's some salad. Like, they throw cheese all over it.
They do, usually.
They put the cheese on the salad.
Yeah.
I mean, Stephanie doesn't need it, right?
Side of powdered gluten. Oh, yeah, I got it right in there. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. I like to call to order the regular meeting of the town council and the Superior Park and Rec Advisory Committee. Want to be go around the table and introduce ourselves so we know who each of us are. I'm Mark Laces, I'm the mayor. Dan's got her mouth. We'll go to Brian.
Brent Hartman, not a mouthful at the time, on the park committee. And the vice chair.
I leave that out. I don't want to brag and I'm not related to the town attorney, even though our last names are spelled the same.
Robert Stevens, current chair.
Martha Sigmund, no official position member.
There you go.
Burton McKenzie, park member.
Brian Meyer, park staff liaison.
Nick Foster, council member.
Neil Shaw, town council member.
Justin Willis, park committee.
Jason Subu, mayor of town.
Jen Cowish, council member.
All right. And Heather and Stephanie are not going to be with us tonight. So, we've got an agenda here that was circulated to us. So, I'll turn it over to you, Robert, and you can leave the show and...
Sounds good. All right, just a second, I'll pull it up on my own. All right. So, I think there's, you know, some priorities on our list that will probably not surprise you. Some things we talk about every year and, you know, but we did, we do our amenities and services prioritization exercise we do every year. That's just the way for our committee to go through and figure out what things are important to us. Putting some numbers behind that, trying to figure out sort of what floats to the top. And, you know, it's pretty much the list that I think Brian may have sent you guys already. It's shade, won't surprise you. We did talk about some ideas around smaller park amenities versus our larger changes in the park. And I can go into a little bit of detail about what we mean by that. And pool upgrades, obviously, are on the list, right? We all know we're doing that. And then the community park play structures, I think, are something else we wanted to discuss. Sort of plan for that, what that's going to happen and what that's going to look like.
Okay. What do you want to start with?
Let's start with the pool.
Okay.
Dive right on.
Well, not if we don't get diving boards.
So, I think, I guess I'll just summarize what I've sort of heard from the committee. But I'd like everyone to sort of just start jumping in and, you know, I'm just going to continue that.
Do it.
That one. As you feel able or ready to talk about stuff. So, I think, you know, we are certainly want to look at what the survey results bring back. I think a couple of folks here have already started looking at that. We did have a engagement session with some public, the public that the consultant ran where we also got a lot of feedback. I think, you know, overall, what we saw from that is there's just like a very wide variety of users. So, it makes it a little difficult maybe to establish exactly what we're looking for. But I think there's probably a little bit of a bias towards not changing things too much. So much as just improving what we have. I know there's some definite ideas on the committee about potential things we could do. Shade is definitely on the list, won't surprise you. There were some other ideas you guys have had. I know we've talked through some of that on the, in the committee. If anyone wants to jump in. I keep saying it.
I mean, I'll make a splash.
Yeah.
I went through, so I grew up swimming. I love the pools and it's one of the things that drew us to the community. My kids are all on swim team and we are walking slash biking distance to Superior Elementary, which is right next to North Pool. And in reading through, like, all the things that are out there, I think the challenges, and we face this a lot in the discussions with the downtown space coming onboard as well as the community center, right? We know we don't want to create carbon copies of the same things in different places. I don't think anything we've talked about is doing that. I think the challenge that we faced is based on where people are in their lives and coming from the community. Like, you have to have enough stuff for our younger kids at each place because they're the ones who aren't able to get and go places like some of our old, our adults are, who can get themselves to other areas around. There were quite a few comments around keeping North Pool, like, less kid focused, which I will say personally kind of got me because it's like, you know, if you have the means and you're, there was comments about people with no kids or double working families, they want a spot to relax. You have a lot of places you have the means to go and your kids need to be able to bike or walk or go to those places as family. So, I'm sensitive if that gets over indexed in there. And I felt like, you know, when I looked at the plans, the small splash pad being the amenity and missing adding anything else to North Pool in the one mockup that's in the presentation for tonight, it felt like a miss to me from what we've talked about as a committee, as well as the feedback that we heard from the community live and what was in the survey results. I think from the town standpoint, we know the first focus is North Pool. And then, you know, we, again, the what's happening with North Pool versus what the plan is for South Pool. I think people have to understand that so they don't react one way to North Pool because it is part of, has a lot of the town stuff, a more comprehensive plan, even though it's in sequence. So, a lot of the comms around it and what gets decided or though, you know, comes out, I think it's just important to level set because people still, and you guys see this more often than we do, but like, build us a rec center instead of a pool. It's like, hold on, like, you don't understand that that's like four times the cost and we don't have the populace to support it. But, you know, educating our community back on why things were or weren't done, I think, is a part of it. But we've had really good, I think, discussions and have aligned. Nothing in there surprised us. I actually think the committee, like, we represent different ages and, you know, where people are in their lives fairly well. And so, nothing was a surprise and nothing really came out of left field in terms of what the recommendations were, what was in the survey. So, that's kind of my take on it is I want to push for the important part for the kids and that they need some other additional activities at North Pool. A separate baby pool was one thing. We heard all about the hot tub and we know that that is not desired for a lot of reasons in aquatics. But that's the challenge is like, that's what a lot of people in town would like. So, is there option like the therapy pools with the squirting things that's warmer? That meets, you know, what the core need is without building a hot tub that creates all the fun German bacteria things that are real with pools. So, anyway, again, there's a balance, but yeah, I think really just staying pragmatic and looking at the feedback and knowing, you know, I know what my bias is on this one and I'll share it openly, but a place where the kids can go and play and then kick the kids out for two hours every day. Right? Like, there's other ways to get adults there, peaceful, quiet time in a nice facility. That doesn't mean you don't add the things for the kids for the 90% of the time.
A second, that?
I'm sorry. What do the, the pool hours are going to be what for North Pool? Are they going to be the same, are they going to change?
As far as I know, they're going to stay the same during the day. I've done the feedback we saw with some residents wanted more open hours swim in the morning. Right now, it's like, you know, I swim masters. So, like, you can go in the morning and swim if you're part of masters. If not, you're kind of out of luck until middle of the day when the pool's open. And then, you know, like, it's not set up well for that. So, is there a way someone suggested like let you sign up and click all the buttons that says I can go by myself as an adult? Because people do that at other facilities. So, that was, you know, one of the ways that residents were suggesting to not change the pool hours, but make open swim for people who want it at the adult level at more times. There was a lot of really good feedback, I thought, on extending the pool. I know that's, you know, part of the structure and the how things would be rebuilt. But it seemed like everybody likes the idea of a longer pool season. I mean, on a day like today or even this weekend, yes, it's difficult, but like, it would have been perfect days for, you know, to be able to get out there and start the pool season. So, I think extending the season, but I don't know if they talked specifically yet or asked about hours. I didn't see anything in there.
Well, the year round was commented on, but that was more so surrounding the heating of the pool and stuff like that. But yeah, I think in general, AM hours were mentioned and then just availability. And I don't want to go on too much of a tangent, but as you know, South Pool was out or down for like three weeks out of 12, you know, which is a major shutdown period for the South Pool over this last season due to the abrasive surfacing and/or staffing. So, I think a common theme is having it open. You know, you can talk about diving boards and lazy rivers and all these kinds of things, right? But having it open is key. And one of the comments made was concerned about, you know, when are you going to shut it down and when is it going to open? And one of the comments was construction projects typically, you know, okay, we'll have this done and, you know, by March and then it's July, you know? So, I think, sorry to say, I'm going to jump around a little bit. I think open, and that's part of my agenda, open versus, you know, a grand plan to create this spectacular, you know, magazine, you know, ready, you know, facility. I think having it open and staffed is like the number one thing. Yes, it needs to be repaired, that needs to be a priority. But maybe instead of, I think it said August through May or something like that, maybe say, you know, after the normal close in September and plan to be open by April, you know? And then you're, you have a 30 day cushion or something like that. I'm just making this up on the fly, but I'm just saying you can, you can create this awesome place, but if it's not open, even on a consistent basis, but certainly after the renovation of the North Pool and when you get there to the South Pool. I mean, yeah, it hurts a little bit in the short run and maybe they're, they'll forget about it. But I think having it open, we only have 12 or so weeks when the pools are open. Such a small window. So, any, any time, any of that time that's eaten into is just a real heartbreaker for a lot of families. So, I would just say, you know, always putting that on the forefront to say, yes, let's, if we want to start with a clean slate, let's, you know, think about all these cool things on the feedback. But ultimately, another thing, a source of the feedback or feedback topics were that we like what you have today. Go ahead and renovate it, but just so it's open on time and during the normal season, I think. And if you guys read through, I didn't read through it word for word, but anyway.
There's concerns about openness. I think getting to the three seasons, right? You extend that season once it's ready and that helps people have more of that time. I separate the, there was some operational issues, right, that are unforeseen, not related to what we want in that facility. But I also heard from, oh my gosh, I'm spacing her name, our aquatics director.
Oh, Katie.
That she said at the, at the public engagement that they've already staffed, planned, like, that was a painful experience and the plans have been made so that that doesn't happen again to the best of people's abilities.
Sure.
So, I think, but it's sharing those things, right? Because when you read the comments, people get stuck on the negative or this is what happened and my kid cut their toe.
Right.
Like, yeah, well, those things happen and that's part of why both pools are getting redone. So, we can keep them open and have facilities and mechanical stuff that's moderate enough to not break.
Yeah.
Right? Which was really what was driving a lot of that, from my understanding.
No, I think it's all, Burton, you have anything else? You want to finish there?
I read through as much of the responses as I could and then I had to go do something else. But, yeah, I mean, and I'd also that the community, the community input, you know, feedback thing was, it was pretty well attended, I thought. So, and probably online, do we have any information we're going to be going over on responses or is everything?
Well, the consultants is actually presenting tonight, the survey results and some cost estimates.
Okay, okay.
I can say when I attended that pool, community engagement, I was surprised to hear in the room. But I thought that we were more focused on the North Pool. That was my understanding. And then it seemed that the people that were attending were very clearly wanting to have equal, if not more, you know, like, there was a lot of pushing either one side or the other, but wanting to see like equal upgrades on the South Pool as well. Like, we just, there's not money to do all of that. And so, it was just surprising to me. So, clearly you're hearing that kind of feedback as well. And the like adult North Pool and kid South Pool thing, like, that was a surprise as well, as if the kids only live over there. Over the whole community.
I find that to be an interesting pattern because I thought there was a couple of things driving that one. I do think the consultant kind of set people up for that a little bit. They're like, hey, don't worry about where it is. But obviously, people were very, very interested in geography because that's the second point is like, it's the closest pool.
Right.
I want to be able to walk there. Like, that's, you know, and, you know, I'm thinking like now, not so much as like all the data that I heard, but just like for my family and how we would work. Like, the competition of those pools is not like so much north versus south. It's more like either of those pools versus going over the lifetime, going to the Louisville Rec Center, right? That have more amenities or maybe it's heated nicer or maybe it's enclosed so you can go there in the winter. So, I think that we have to, you know, figure out that maybe, maybe there's a little bit of that as well. It's like, what are we really competing with here and what can we do? Sort of, I think like the geography and the localness is a big part of it.
Yeah, we talk a lot about that for a lot of the programming or other things that have come up is, you know, we are much smaller than our neighboring communities, but a lot of people want us to have all those same amenities at the same scale. And they're like, okay, you know, you can't, you don't have the space. And it's also, you know, to me, some of it's like, make the five minute drive, make the 10 minute drive. And if you really are going for it, make a 20 minute drive and you can get to any of these amazing places. And it sure would be awesome if it's in our backyard, but if it wasn't, people would complain about it's too big, too noisy, too many people are coming. Right? So, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys hear that often, right? Like, that we're talking out of both sides as, you know, people do. But I felt like it was consistent with what we heard. I don't think there was anything shocking. I think it'll come down to budget and footprint and what can be done there. I would just, you know, take the opportunity because it comes once every 20 or 30 years to modernize and expand. So, even if it's planning for a little bit further ahead and, you know, time wise allows, you know, do it in a way that sets us up to be in the good spot, not just kind of limp through it to then have people still not happy with their result.
Well, you make a good point. I mean, it's the same issue with the rec center. Everybody loves the idea of a rec center because the perception is that it'd be cheaper than going to a lifetime. It's not. It just means somebody else is paying part of the bill, right? You know?
I tell people all the time, Louisville residents still pay.
They do.
They pay like $10 less than not.
And it's, it was $20 million for the renovation of the facility with a major property tax increase, which was approved, right? So, there's costs that come with these things and the challenge of these surveys is everybody wants everything when there's no dollar amounts attached to them.
And they have punch passes, right?
Louisville?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
There was a high bar on one of the responses that a lot of people want to keep everything free at our pools.
So, if that's the guiding principle, then back to your point on budgets, we've got to figure out how do we ensure that we don't rack up the operating costs on these things to keep them running nine months of the year? Because what I gathered and I didn't, we'll talk about it later today, is there's reduced operating hours in the winter. What's it cost to keep it open relative to just shutting it? You know, if staffing is more of a challenge. And that's what Louisville went through when they finished this thing is they couldn't get the pool staffed year round because everybody went to college. So, the pool is just closed.
Yeah.
And that's my big fear is that we do all these things and then the operating costs get so high that we do have to change how we run them. Fees or punch cards or something. So, maybe the answer really is like, what are the core things we really just wanted to do? I mean, I know we just did a survey and we got a ton of feedback, but what are those really the core things that are not sort of duplicated by, you could just go to the lifetime, you could just go to, you know, great outdoors, whatever, right? Like, what is it about a neighborhood pool that's really critical? And I do think the access for kids is a big part of that. And so, therefore, I would not like to see us turn North Pool into like the competition pool only, right? Obviously, the flyers are a major user. They should be accommodated, but they shouldn't be, you shouldn't like bulldoze the baby pool, right?
No, I think the footprint at North Pool, like, what I saw wasn't, didn't feel super creative to me because I think the volumes at South Pool got big last year because the waiting pool at North Pool shut down. Like, when my kid, we would drive, we'd drive past North Pool because zero depth entry and a place to play. So, I think you have to keep, you have to create a spot where it balances it out and then people are going to the spot that is their neighborhood pool. And sure, like, competition stuff's different. It's like driving your kids to club soccer. Your field might be over here, it might be in Boulder, but, you know, like, Rock Creek Flyers are all superior kids. Like, that, there isn't people from outside the town in there for them to get to and enjoy it. So, I don't know. Yeah, I think it'll be interesting to see what they present back. And then, I think from a park standpoint, knowing that this is moving faster than our once a week or once a month meetings. And really, it was how do we make sure we stay involved and is there something else that we can or should be doing to fulfill our role as park is something when it's moving faster? It's easier when we're doing some of the smaller things and bringing ideas and it's like, okay, let's follow that process. This is on a much expedited trajectory. And what I would say on behalf of the committee members is we all, at some point have expressed, this was a passion project and one of the things that brought us to volunteer for the committee. And so, making sure that we know how to be a part of it and feel like we contributed without slowing it down is important for us, you know, going forward with the speed that this is going to work out.
One thing that came up quite a bit during the surveys is the issue of a potential diving board. And some people are saying, well, that's just never going to happen because of liability. So, is there any, we're going to be seeing the presentation tonight, but is that even feasible to have a diving board?
Is it deep enough?
It's not deep enough now. We'd have to have a, like, there's diving wells that they make that are separate that fit really nicely in some of the space over there. I don't think it's an option.
It hasn't been presented by the consultants because I think we'd have to dig it out, probably like, you know, the 10 feet new concrete and everything else. And it's just a whole different.
Well, I would, I would. Essential to the budget right now is the idea that we're basically keeping the core shell of both pools.
Essential to the budget right now is the idea that we're basically keeping the core shell of the, of both pools, right, like not just bulldozing them and starting from scratch.
Okay. So like, is that, just to be clear, is that true for, so there's the, the central pools and then there's like the little baby pools, are those more?
That's sort of the central pools. I mean, I, I think what the, and we haven't seen any design yet and so, you know, everything is just very high level. But what, what's on the agenda for tonight in the presentation is the idea of getting rid of the baby pool at the North Pool and turning that into a splash pad. So if that's something that everybody hates, like those are the sorts of things that are helpful for us to know before we, you know, if like that's a no go, uh, you know, let us know now before we kind of proceed and say like, oh, that sounds good. Because like from my perspective, if we have a baby pool that's not being used or is, is broken and a splash pad is going to be used and people like it, like, okay, like I don't have any, you know, I don't have any problem with, with making that sort of change.
I, I think that, so I will say like, we actually used that, that baby pool at North Pool quite a bit when my son was really young, even though it was not ideal, right? It's, it's not a zero end of entry, it's always kind of cold, right? It's kind of got kind of gross. I understand why the aqua staff doesn't like it because it's a pain in the butt to deal with tiny pools, right? But, um, I don't know that a splash pad would be my preferred amenity for replacing that. It doesn't feel like it sort of meets the same use case to me. I think kids taking a cold, you know, I might rather see like a zero depth entry situation there or something like that. I just don't know how you set that up with respect to the rest of the pool.
Well, and I think that's what I meant when I don't feel like they looked at in, in that example in there. Like I, I've worked at many facilities that have separate diving wells. So you don't have to redo the existing pool footprint. If you're going to move stuff around, you can make a self-contained area. And that to me also keeps things a little bit separate and allows for some flow and other pieces. And that's what I just would, as a, from a personal standpoint would push on is how do we create those? And if it's not a splash pad because it's smaller, zero depth is good for kids to learn and play. And, you know, I think that those are all important things. Eventually you run out of space, right, first, and then budget is, is real. And that's really the point is like, hey, in order to dig out the 13 feet of depth that you need, that's going to slow you down and cost you this much, which means you're never going to get to South Pool. Like that's the kind of the trade off stuff to be that I think we should just put on the table. Because then people go, ah, I got, I, I was heard, those ideas were there. Because it was the third thing on the list. So to not even see it on the summary slide was like, we got to acknowledge it. Otherwise I think that's when people go, hold on, like I gave my feedback, where is it? We heard it, here's why it wasn't considered, and now this is what we're going to do. And it helps, should help the rational people.
And I, I think some of those items will come up tonight and then certainly like in future meetings when, when we get more towards a, an actual concrete design and, and contract award. I think from, from my perspective, you know, we've been, to your point Brent, like in terms of accelerating this and kind of stepping on the gas and trying to get, get this project, uh, moving. You know, I think we're trying to be responsive to the voters and who authorized the sales tax ballot measure to, okay, like let's invest in, in the community as quickly as possible. And we're trying to do it in a way that we could actually get this done for next season. You know, I certainly don't want, uh, I don't want to lose a season, right? And like, and have a situation where we start the work and then all of a sudden like the one pool is, is down for the, for the summer. But I also don't want to go so fast that we're, you know, reckless and cavalier and we make, make mistakes. So if we get to the point where we're like, we really can't agree on a, on a, on a design and, and that means like we need to, to take a pause and, you know, get this done for 2026 instead of 2025, like I'd rather do it well than do it quickly and, and miss some things. But, um, I think we can get it done by, by 2025. But to, to your point about like the budget, we've been roughly apportioning about $5 million to the North Pool, $5 million to the South Pool, and then the remaining kind of five and change. This is all proceeds from the, from the ballot measure. We're, we're expecting somewhere between 15 to 20 million dollars in bond proceeds when we go out to the debt markets this summer. The rest would be for, you know, the road projects that we're accelerating as well as like doing some work in parks and playgrounds.
Yep.
So roughly, I mean, that doesn't mean that we need to necessarily spend five on one and five on another. I think the estimate that we have in the, in the packet for tonight is there's about $2 million of hard like mechanical costs that absolutely need to be spent to get the pool working. And then there's $2.5 million of the things that are, you know, the nice upgrades and, and options. And that's where we get into, you know, we, we play around with, if we're not doing a splash pad, like I don't know exactly what a splash pad costs versus keeping a baby pool or converting into a zero entry. But, you know, those are the sorts of things on those kind of discretionary judgment calls on, on, you know, what we'd like to see, where I really value not only the public's opinion, but this committee's opinion on, give us the direction and pay attention to the meetings when we're meeting with a consultant, because we don't want to, we don't want to hear the, hey, you shouldn't have done that, like after we've already awarded the contract and they're already digging things up. So recognizing that we're never, ever going to agree on everything. And at the end of the day, like it's a judgment call as to what we think is going to be in the best interest of, of the pool.
I would just add that for the splash pad, I completely agree it's a different use case because there are baby pools everywhere, but the opportunity I think for a splash pad is much higher throughout the entire neighborhood, like Wildflower and community parks both already have water hookups where we could put a splash pad in and that could also open up the season of like having a water feature in a park during the weekends like this past one, right? Like I know it's on at Bear Park right now because my kids are there right now as we speak. But, um, having more of those water features during those early and end season, I think would be really ideal. So.
We've got the one downtown, Bearman Plaza, but, yeah.
We're going to own it soon.
We will, we will take it over at some point and then be able to control it. That's the problem, it's owned by the Metro District, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a good point of, like a splash pad is not equitable to a pool.
Yeah.
Right? And you think of it more from like a, a park and a, and little kids, you know, will waddle through them. But, you know, is that what you want that space to be used for at the pool?
Right.
I think it's hard because you've got parents at a lot of different ages. There was a lot, a lot of pre-survey feedback about people disliking the separate baby pool at South Pool. I remember loving that because you can shut the gate and the little kids are stoked. And then when it's, when it's a break time, you're not getting flooded by all the big kids.
When it's adult swim, they go into the.
Right, and so I, I think there's some real, real value to keeping a separate, although maybe like, you know, the fencing needs to be redone, that, you know, some of those things. But having a separate area where the little kids can learn to swim and be comfortable in the water in a way that's not extra stress for the staff, but like let's, let's them explore that part of play, which is different than a splash pad where.
And where running is encouraged. Unlike at a pool where you're never encouraged, right? Big difference for, for a lifeguard guarding a splash pad versus a pool. It's like you have two sets of rules then that you're also working with.
Yep.
And where, the splash pad is going to be from downtown Superior as well.
Yeah.
So if that's the option, you're looking for the running, which is not conducive to the pool.
Yeah.
It's the opposite of what they're telling them, then, yeah.
Yep.
You'd have to get there though, if you don't live in downtown.
What's why I like at the other parks where there's water, like is that something that becomes part of our ongoing list? Like shade and?
I think we talk about Wildflower all the time and that's probably something else on your agenda. It's like the, the need for water features and the need for shade. Those are like two of the things that are just recurring topics for us. And so shade being a big one alongside.
Turn the bocce pit into a big slip and slide.
It'll get more use.
Yeah.
Don't say that.
Do, do we feel like we've?
Nobody plays bocce. Because it's just been a, I've never seen anybody play bocce.
Been an empty rectangle.
We have a plan for the town on National Day.
Okay.
So we could take off the diving board for the survey. Keep this in the future.
And I, I, I will, I will not push for it when, when there's a, here's, here's what that costs and what that would do to the rest of what we want to do when it falls below the cutting line floor because it, at minimum, that expense is a half a million dollars making it up. And that means that these other things that are on the required list don't get done. And like that's, that to me is the, what I would press us to communicate back to the community in terms of why those ideas aren't showing. Because ultimately, every, most people who are out here should be able to look at that, understand the logical argument, disagree, want it differently, but under, you know, understand. And then, cool, we're getting all these other amazing new things. My kids are still going to run and jump in even though they're not supposed to. And they're still going to splash those chairs on the way to the shed every day because that's where they play. So that's the other part is in, in hearing the adult feedback, there isn't an area there, you know, like so kids could just go run and jump into the deep end somewhere that isn't right adjacent to all the sunbathing area where these adults who apparently don't have kids and want to just relax with the North Pool go and hang out. But, um, that's not what I see with them actually.
Yeah, I know.
Anyway.
But Brent, you, you bring up a good point and it's, because I remember you came to TSC meeting like many years ago wanting to see the raw data. Like this is an organism, this is the community that needs to see the data. And I think when they do see the full list, they can understand, you know, why and how we have to make the decisions.
Yep.
It's great feedback.
Do you have like a top 10 like questions that you, or requests you have for the pool and like why we're not doing it that way?
I, I told the, I told the consultant everything. I said, I hope you guys are really capturing this and hearing why, because you're going to have to tell people no and you, you should be clear. Like it's a communications thing and I feel fortunate on the board, um, or on the park committee, with the folks who were there for so long had a lot of context that I never knew, right? And we had, I think everybody who joined had the same series of questions, like why don't we have a rec center? And then you get educated and you're like, duh, right? And so some of that just lives out there in a different way to keep people from coming back. And hey, it's a great feedback, that's been asked a lot, here's the FAQ and this is why, right? And I just was amazed by how much negativity was in the survey results, frankly. And so that to me is how we try to combat it a little differently than.
Human nature.
I get it.
Responding to government surveys, you're going to get negativity.
And I've, Fortune 100, I get how the survey response, I go, anyway, yeah, pools are good.
Do we, do we talk enough about that? Do we move on? Anything else?
I, I do think that just one, one kind of general observation, uh, when I looked at the, at the feedback from the, from the community, just the data, the data collected, if people aren't looking for huge change and if there's like one thing that I've learned over the years of doing this is that any big change is going to really upset people, like people might get used to it over time, but like, uh, you know, if you rock the boat too much, like you're going to upset some people. So I think like the expectations of, you know, what we can do with, with the money that we've got from the ballot measure isn't going to be this kind of transformative, like, oh my God, like you're not going to recognize the North Pool, you're not going to recognize the South Pool, like of course. They are going to be very similar to what they are. They're just going to be updated and upgraded, so they're not falling apart, they're not shut down and they're going to last for the next 20 to 30 years.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, like that costs a shocking amount of money.
It's modernization, not transformation. And I think there's, there's lots of things we can do in those that would make it much more useful, just like the locker room being like just a quick, you know, things like that.
But, but the flip side of that is even though we're doing that, we still need to deliver on something that still feels like the voters are getting something shiny and new for their, their tax dollars, right? Like you don't want it to be like, it's like we pass this sales tax increase and it looks exactly the same and I don't notice anything else.
The tiles are black instead of.
Right, exactly, yeah, no, it needs to be.
You got new kids a steam room, is that what you're saying?
Or purple.
You go to Costco, might want those ones.
So we should open a survey and for all the people who wanted a hot tub, like the town could buy a hot tub for one and commented that they wanted a hot tub and like just get it delivered from Costco. It's a lot cheaper than.
I was going to make the baby pool a hot tub and there was channel, La-Z-zy River to the main.
La-Z-zy River didn't show up, so people were realistic. No one was like, make a La-Z-zy River. Nobody actually said to get rid of the tennis courts, so you're lucky. Anyway, community park, that was next, all right.
That was next on the list. So we obviously know that there's a plan to upgrade Community Park Playground. Also, you know, potentially some other things about Community Park. I think there's certainly that's something where we want to have some input. But, you know, I think the, the things that come up on our list, obviously all the time are better placed structures, infrastructures, right? Something a little more inventive. I think we did a great job with Bear Park, or Superior Commons, sorry, down there. I'm just going to call it Bear Park because that's what I mean. But, you know, something, something a little more modern, but things that frequently come up in our meetings are bathrooms just being a little bit rundown, maybe not the best quality stuff there. Obviously needs to be, I think the term I've heard is teenager proof, but, you know, something that, maybe it's a little nicer. The multi-use fields come up a decent amount. There's just a lot of debate on the committee about, you know, are we using those to maximum potentially? Should, do we want to leave them as giant grass fields because that's really great for some people? Is there something that could be done with them that's more structured, you know, is there something in the middle? I think just random ideas that have gotten thrown out by us, by people in the committee, ropes course, swing grid, zip lines, uh, and, you know, stuff that you can access like cornhole boxes, things like that. So these are splash pad, I'm going to add that to the list so we don't forget it, um, you know, things like that. So I think, you know, we don't know sort of, I guess, the, the budgetary side of that and the timeline side of that. So it'd be helpful to know that, it'd be helpful to know sort of what kind of input is helpful for the town going forward on that. I think we had talked about a million bucks, give or take. Wes would probably know that more than anybody.
Community?
Yeah.
You're going to have to one and a quarter.
Okay. And so what does that get us? Is that, is that the playgrounds? Is that playground and bathrooms? Is that playground and bathrooms?
That is just the playground. So I have to step up so the mics can hear me.
Yes.
That is basically the playground, the playground surfacing with shade and keeping relatively the same footprint.
Got it.
With equipment that ranges from toddler to 12.
Okay.
ADA compliant. But there's not food restrooms.
Not broken, you know, rubber, you know, all the. Yeah, that, that park's in bad shape, right? We all know that, yeah.
How much does a restroom cost, give or take, you know, the, the most basic ones?
For minors, like, what was it, like 80 grand for that?
No, it was like 350.
We already have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already have, we're just talking about.
Just a random.
If we were to replace it with something like we have in Superior Commons, that new kind of model, we're probably talking close to 3, 350.
Okay.
It does come up a lot, so I'll just, I'll throw it out there, even if it's not in the budget right now. But it has, I feel like since I've been on the committee, it's come up every, I don't know, three, four months. I might be like, I think that bathroom. Yeah, I mean, and there's, you know, there's broader aspects of it, you know, because like with, you know, this one, it services a giant park. With Community Park, it does service, you know, Chili Fest, all the other big events are there too. So the bathrooms get heavily used for certain times of the year beyond just Community Park.
Yeah.
I think the footprint's challenging at Community Park, you know, like the way the parking lot's set up and then the, the walk down the path for it is like more of a commuter park versus like a, a neighborhood park. So I think that's part of the, the challenge and, you know, I don't know how many kids are coming, let's say, down from the other side of Colton versus the ones that live there. So we always talked about like some of the usage of it and is it a very expansive park that doesn't get heavily used? I think we, we know that. I think we've all been to birthday parties there and, and, you know, those things. So it happens and the space gets, gets used. There's a lot around there and we just, I think it was, you said at the beginning, we, we don't want to shoot for a $10 million thing for Community Park when the budget's 1.2. We can, you know, ideate on that in, in our upcoming session and say, what do we, what do we want to do to help support it?
So there may not be a whole lot to discuss on this one, other than just to say that we do, we have a lot of ideas. We'd like to see it done, obviously. I think that everyone's probably in agreement, the playground there is very aged at this point. My, my own just informal from taking my kid to various parks around there is that that one actually does get less used than you would expect, given the size compared to something like Purple Park. That's newer, Purple Park gets really busy. So that's just, I, I think it could be the age or it could be the location, like you said.
When people stop going because, because of the situation too, right? So like, I think that's part of even with the pools and the, the, the usage is going to move by a pattern, right? And we're going to find out as things get older, people stop using them, want to go somewhere else and then go. But yeah, the shade structures are real.
Part of it is that park gets really hot in the summer. So you really, it's almost unusable at times. But if you're there when it's cooler out, then you have people coming over from the Autry Townhomes. You have people coming from Bell and all other parts of the neighborhood too. So I'd say it actually is a true like community park because it does draw in people from a lot of different areas, like biking or otherwise, but it's very dependent on season.
Yeah.
Splash pad there would be nice.
It'd be cool, yeah.
That's why it's on the list.
Yes, but I want to, I want to get in here and say the thing on the top of the list, as it always is, is shade.
Yeah.
And I think that that is, you know, as we are upgrading it, like we talked about how, okay, that's, you know, when we present this to you, like we probably shouldn't just say like, yeah, just put shade everywhere, right? No, I mean, this is, you know, as we're doing it, let's be strategic, you know? We're doing community park upgrades, like that's the time to do it. But um, you know, something that's a little, I think what we did at Founders was pretty good, um, but more, right? Let's do that, let's do that, but more.
And that's the integrated shade, right?
Integrated shade.
Part of the play structure.
There's both.
Yeah.
There's both.
Sagamore has those too.
Yeah, integrate shade structures to to keep the playground itself cool. And then also, you know, shade, shade, shade structures kind of just around to hang out under, you know, for parents or just kids to go cool off. Um, you know, there is like the little shelter at community park, it's just not that big, right?
What's the timeline on this project?
Um, we're doing, we have eight, eight bids that we received for that. Um, we're doing interviews Thursday. There's a pretty accelerated timeline on that, right, Leslie? I mean, I think.
I think we're targeting the meeting on the 27th.
Yeah.
To bring the engagement. But then we'll go, we'll work with whoever selected on the actual design after that with the park committee and with the with public engagement.
So this would be the, this is, that would be the design contract on the 27th. So the the contractor to do the design and the build.
Correct.
It's going to be, yeah. And so we would be hiring them on the 27th and then they come back to us with the design sometime, what, July?
Summer.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, yeah.
I mean, obviously we don't want to start construction until later on in the fall.
Right, and it'll go to a park first?
Correct.
Okay.
The coach, the vice chair will make sure it's on the June agenda. Thank you, vice chair. Good job. Recognized in the beep.
All right, well, now how I was supposed to say on that, that one, other than, you know, it's on the docket. Uh, I wanted to bring up just a maybe a couple more things that were interesting, things I think fell out of the process. Um, one, I think, and and Justin, I feel like you were kind of championing this idea, so I'm going to invoke you a little bit. Um, so the idea of, you know, a couple of things. One is, you know, are we doing a good job of maintaining our existing um, stuff? You know, a lot of things like the bocce court came up fairly frequently. It was like something that's just like not that well maintained, right? And you know, hey, it becomes like not usable. Um, then there are people not using it because it's not usable or, you know, are we not maintaining it because we need to use it? It's just kind of, yeah. Um, and then also, um, sort of a related idea to that is spending smaller amounts of money to add smaller amenities to existing parks. Or maybe to, you know, tweak or slightly upgrade smaller parks that are maybe not getting as much attention. Um, there's a lot of the sort of neighborhood pocket parks that have like very small play structures or, you know, maybe just nothing else like a picnic table. You know, are we doing enough to try to make those appealing to people? Um, it's, you know, absolutely like we want big, cool parks that, you know, are a draw for people to come socialize. But sometimes, you know, it's, I got 30 minutes before dinner, all I got time to do is walk down to Circle Park and, you know, throw the frisbee. And that's fun, but you know, it'd be nice if there was like something there other than that, so. So just a little bit of history, we talked briefly about doing something at Riverbend.
Yeah.
That was a very bad idea. Nobody in the neighborhood. I mean, we had, we had a public engagement session and the cops got called because it was bad. Um, so.
What was that?
When we talked about adding amenities to where there might not be amenities.
Yeah.
Just be ready for people to tell. A very broad conversation.
What was the main opposing reaction?
Uh, I don't want anything here.
Noise.
Yeah, yeah, no plastic anything, there's parks over there.
No.
There's a lot of that, I mean.
Well, it's 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 the change thing, right? People don't like change, right? So if Riverbend doesn't have a playground, so it's this naturalized, uh, beautiful park with a pond and, you know, birds are flying in there. And people like what they like because they they're used to it. They're, they don't like the idea of it getting torn up and changed, so change is hard.
And it goes back to like, not everything needs to be a a park or a playground or a pool. Because I mean, the kids can run around there and they go find the frogs on the thing and like we, my kids call it Frog Lake and they love going to Frog Lake. Right? So there's, it's part of it's like inciting different activities and leaving space for it to be open. I think a lot of it's the open space.
Yeah.
Like, I remember at one point, this was two years ago, they were like, well, what if we like took out a bunch of the grass at Purple Park? People were like, what? Like, no, right? Like, sorry, we're sustainability, like that's, park's going to stay green grass. So yeah, I think there's change aversion, but there's just like that natural space, which is a big draw for the community. And I'm going to imagine that kind of protected space is even more valuable now that you've got such density downtown. Because it, Rock Creek and the other areas had some more space to them, but like that's compact, right? So if they want to get away, they got to have a spot to go do it.
So on the smaller park amenities, do you have any like specific asks that like is the considerance of the budget for for next year? For kind of deploying these into the various places?
It was like tetherball, Gaga ball pits, small little. Ball pits, bouldering area, tetherball, basketball hoops, sledding hill, splash pad.
Yeah, thank you. Do it on every line item.
Yes, I would definitely do that.
And do you have, do you have specific items for specific areas?
I don't think we got that far, so.
So that would be, I think that would be really helpful for like guiding us in terms of, you know, what parks do you think are, you know, whether they're tired because the the equipment is just kind of old and needs updating.
Yeah.
Um, or just kind of like lacking in like, all right, this one has, uh, you know, monkey bars, but has nothing else. So therefore like a swing would be really good or whatever it is, you know? And in specific, you know, in specific places, I think that would help us.
There are some good examples of it too, I believe, like a Village Green Park. There is that mounted or however it's attached, um, box of chalk that lasted a full summer, surprisingly. And, you know, community members, I know, added to it as well. But I think there's definitely opportunities to keep small stuff like that up.
Yeah, I'm thinking of, there's there's another park that's over by, I'm going to forget the name of that part in the neighborhood, but um, it's just like, just south of um, Colton Road. And there's like a small park there that has a small playground that's like very old and tired, you know, stuff like that. And I'm, I will look it up on the map so I can tell you where I'm talking.
What in the townhomes?
Might be.
The summit?
Yes, I think that's it.
Oh, with the chipmunk.
Fire Station Park, that's right. Yeah, Fire Station. Fire Station is an interesting one because, you know, it was built by the developer before Wildflower showed up, right? So my parents live around the corner and the kids play there like all the time. Then Wildflower showed up. Yeah. And now it's sort of like, is it redundant? Yeah, yeah. And I mean, maybe that's the kind of thing we need to think about is like, is there something that would be better?
Better than just a splash pad?
Make it a diving well, just put a diving board. Make it modern art and not even a pool, just a diving board on the grass.
Off the rails here. Tennis court?
Always tennis. Uh, I think, um, you've gone back to the original thing, you know, tethered ball and and these types of things are add-on, you know, enhancements. And my platform is just refresh it. Things are peeling up, there's some mildly unsafe playground features. There's features at the playground that are unusable, that were usable 22 years ago, what have you, or 25 years ago, um, even at the Fire Station. So that's what Robert's referring to is is I always get on my soapbox about, um, nothing new. We have a ton of stuff here. Let's just refresh it. And the reason why I'm kind of giggling there is is talking about either bocce or or horseshoe. Let's not do that again if there's no interest to keep it up. Or if the idea is everyone goes out and buys their own bocce set and their own horseshoe set. Is that really what we're asking people to do and then not keep it up? I'm, I, it's not that a lot of people know about my, my going on and on about the bocce. And I I pretty much would probably agree, who wants to play bocce, right? We immediately bought a bocce set when Wildflower opened and we were getting our friends over there and stuff, but then it became quickly unusable. So if you didn't build it, we wouldn't have bought a set. And it's not that, we bought it at like a thrift store. It's not about that. It's, it, the the theme there is is let's not build something that we expect people to um, get their own sporting equipment for and that we're not planning on keeping up for the next 50 years. So it's, it's not so much that I love bocce, it's just that you guys built a bocce. And I say you guys, I think most of you, you guys are are new too. So it's not that I love bocce, but I love that it's by my house. I went out and bought a set and now it's unusable after six to 12 months after the park opening. So if you would have never put it in, I would have never cared and I wouldn't have spent hours talking about bocce. It's about the principle of it, you know? Go ahead and repurpose it, that's fine. I'm just saying, let's not build anything like a tetherball at community park where the ball got ripped off in how many weeks? I don't know, I didn't start it, I stopped on, but let's not build anything.
Do you have a scorecard on on kind of like the kind of condition, kind of similar to like our roads with with like the smaller parks about just kind of like what needs the most work and most attention?
Yeah, I mean, our park staff, they do regular monthly playground inspections. Um, Leslie, as far as the detail of that, like.
It would just be great to see like on on one sheet that just says like, all right, yeah, this this park's been updated in 2025. Like this one last was updated in 2000.
Whatever.
Yeah, and is is falling apart, you know, number of complaints that we get on, just so we can kind of figure out like what needs the most amount of attention and.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that. We actually had a consultant do all our playgrounds once, you know, once um, in 2024, just to get a baseline. Um, and then the park staff do inspections and uh, score the playgrounds once a month.
Because the road scorecard is really helpful for us when we're doing the road projects. So like having a playground kind of scorecard would be, I think, equally helpful.
Yeah, I would, I would say we we are um, behind and underfunded in that area. So, you know, we try and make it safe and then like especially some of the older, smaller playgrounds in the neighborhoods, sometimes they will lose a component. Sometimes that component doesn't exist anymore. So so you have a pirate ship that doesn't have a a wheel on it anymore because that. So some of those, we really do need to go back in and and do a refresh.
I think it'd be easy to look at the data for um, C fix, C click fix, um, to see which one has the most like marks like against a rider request. Be easy to see a ranking of like, especially if you like compare size versus number of requests coming in for that, like pirate park, I don't know.
Because we had pulled that, that was one of the things to make sure we weren't missing when we did the amenities list is another source of community feedback was, so Leslie and the team pulled all the C click fix and a lot of it was unrelated or like general. I think that challenges, like I know when I've been in parks and something's wrong, like I see click fix it and it and it gets dumped. And so that's when things are broken, like that is to be the different avenue than the like what's fading and we want to keep from fading or repair. That hasn't switched to the someone's going to report this as a violation to like, we should stay ahead of it. Uh, but there's, I mean, there's a lot of parks. Um, and so I think sometimes in the try to keep everything going, you keep nothing going. And like, you know, that's what I think is good about the community park and the pools is we can focus on some big things. And then like everything else just has to not be prioritized because it won't, it won't get done that way either. And then it cycles through to your point of there's a, they should be updated every X years and here's the plan to to do it.
So do you want to be mindful of time, 6:54 already? Uh, and I know that Brian, you had added, I'm just called budget discussion to the to the list. And just wanted to see what we wanted to talk about there, you know, we don't have a whole lot of time.
Oh, yeah, I think that was just more, I think all committees were doing that as a agenda item at these dinners, but more just like prior, any prioritized items that you guys want to bring to council's attention?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
2026 budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think we kind of know the priorities, um, you know, just it's sort of this one. I think this this is exactly the point we just brought up, it's like, you know, how much money in the bucket for fixing and keeping, maintaining what we have versus how much money in the bucket for new things? And I think, you know, some of that money is obviously earmarked, but um, you know, I think we have, even within the committee, we have a tension between like those things. Um, maybe wanting to see a little more repair of existing structures, so.
Yeah, I think my, I mean, what would be really helpful for me is like when we're going into the budgeting process in the fall. And we always have our our presentation and our our capital improvement tabs where we're going through all different departments and different projects. And, you know, it's voluminous and it's enormous in terms of the amount of uh, items that there are that need attention. Um, and things can kind of get lost in like just the the complexity of just the sheer volume of it. Um, so, but, you know, we don't, we don't want to let things like slip through the cracks. So like, I think this idea of like scoring the, you know, the existing parks and and infrastructure and um, you know, having some sort of presentation where we can kind of see like, okay, we've got 20 of these, you know, parks throughout town and um, you know, we know that they they need attention over the next five years. And like part of the budget is not just like the budget for next year, but it's like the budgeting process over the the next five years. Um, so like if we can know like, okay, we've got like a concrete goal here to um, invest and spruce up and make sure that like the existing infrastructure is not getting to the point where it's like unsafe or just like dilapidated and embarrassing, right? Like we have high standards in this community, the residents have high standards, they want it to look nice. So, you know, then we can at least proceed with a more, I think, like strategic and like intentional approach to like, all right, we're specifically investing in these parks and we're doing it over the next five years. And we know that we'll be able to get five next year and the next five after that and.
And one of the the tools that might be able to help with that is some kind of um, matrix where you've got whatever your three or four or five categories are, you're weighting, you're scoring and you do the math. And so, okay, health and safety, playability, whatever the categories are that you come up with and like, oh yeah, these three parks rose to the top in terms of the top priority. And presenting that to the council would be would be incredibly insightful. And then it, then next year we get to the next set of priority projects, parks. So I don't know if that's a tool that Park has developed or could develop.
Don't you guys kind of have that already with the park, like, I just remembered doing that.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is exactly that, right?
Yeah.
The spreadsheet, just any spreadsheet. I think it's just not, it's maybe not down to that level of granularity that you're describing where it's more like, okay, this park is like a five on, like has great structures, right? But they're like all kind of broken, so you know, like where's that?
So the safety would be zero out of five.
Exactly. Like it's like great, you know, it's fun, not very safe, right? This one was like, you know, that one's pretty safe, but it's really boring. And like, you know, where do we kind of, where is all that shake out?
Right.
To like a general, okay, now what do we do, right? What are we going to do first?
But I think having Park have those kind of really in-depth conversations and kind of present that to the council, town council, I think would go a really, really long way.
Yeah, sure.
And in an executive summary format, so it's like condensed, right? Rather than like.
Here's the spreadsheet.
Here's the massive spreadsheet, we're like, you sort it out, like I want the recommendation from Park, like this is what.
Right.
Like make our job easy by by just telling us what to spend the money and focus the time on. And then I think we'll be able to execute better and you'll be happier because we're doing what you want.
You're good at spending the money.
Yeah. So. Or always asking you, tell you yours then. Um, okay, that's something we could definitely work on.
Yeah, great. Well, thanks for your time and your service to the community. We appreciate taking the time to have dinner with us.
Thanks for dinner.
Yeah, and stick around for the discussion on the pools tonight and and over the next couple meetings. Because we're going to be right now targeting, making a decision on the design contract in June, I think, maybe July?
Yeah.
June or July?
Yeah, June.
The idea of, you know, moving dirt in like August, September, so.
But we will, and and we'll be hearing some version, repeat of what we're hearing tonight at department because obviously there's, you know, some.
Yeah, I think the consultant is going to, they're going to be at the um, the May 21st park meeting to give you guys an update, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you again.
Yeah.